Good evening. Got a big enough commission chamber finally for once. Thank you for coming. I invite you to join us in the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Garrick?
Here.
Grinberg?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here. Fire, this is the week of the fire department is observing Home Fire Sprinkler Week. The fire department's fire safety house will be open tomorrow, May 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to noon to provide home fire safety education. Department received $500 from the Home Fire Sprinkler Coalition to increase home fire sprinkler education locally. According to the fire association, the risk of dying in home fire decreases by 85% if sprinklers are present. That's quite a bit. I thought you guys get there fast enough, though. Health. The Fargo-Cass Public Health has installed two outdoor sharps, kiosks for the safe and secure depositors, syringes, needles, lancets, auto injectors, infusion, and connector sets. The large blue kiosks look and function very much like a small mail drop box. The kiosks are available for public use, are accessible anytime, and are located in the Harm Reduction Center at 510 Fifth Street North and at the main public health building on 25th Street South. So if you've got any needles or sharps you want to get rid of, please hand them in at that time. The North Dakota Department of Health Services Behavior Health Division has awarded funds to the Fargo-Cass Public Health to continue local efforts dedicated to decreasing access to unwanted prescription opioids and to increasing the access to Narcan as well as the recovery support services. The funding will support local efforts this year through September 30th with potential and continuing funding in September 2020. Since we began to work on prescription drugs in the city of Fargo and the Cass County area, we have decreased prescriptions by 40% by our healthcare providers. So that's a tremendous impact in how many narcotics are out there for people to get in trouble with. May is the building safety month, and the safety of buildings and properties is what the inspection department works on every day. Building safety professionals play a major role in keeping the public safe. They ensure that homes, businesses, and places of public assembly are built to required building safety codes which address structural stability, fire safety, exit sanitation, electricity, energy efficiency, and more. And we have found some unsafe houses in the community, and they're working to make those as well come up to code. The library's annual summer reading program starts June 3rd. The University of Stories is the theme of this year's program, which will run through August 10th. The Fargo Human Relations Commission has joined the Community Workforce Inclusion Council to find ways to further equality in the workforce and other sectors in Fargo metro area. And the Arts and Culture Commission is seeking input from the public about installation of public art. To take the survey and learn more about the Arts and Culture Commission, ask the City of Fargo website, visit the website and put in your input. They're kind of asking where you'd like to see some public art around the community. In police, eight new police officers were sworn in last week at a ceremony at the City Commission Chambers. Chief Todd reports the proud family members were very impressed and thankful for all the preparation to make the ceremony memorable for them and to the new officers. And they basically filled up the chamber as well. It was fun to see. And the law enforcement memorial service was held last week in Lindenwood Park. It takes a lot of hard work and commitment by many people to arrange a service and get everything set up, and it's a do fantastic job. Chief Todd was one of the main speakers at that time. Hard to believe that in the nation, we had 163 deaths of police or police officers in line of duty, which is a tragedy in itself, but it was a very nice memorial service and well attended. And Brock, are you here? Brock Morrison, would you stand up? Brock Morrison joined the city as the Director of Facilities Management. Brock is responsible for overseeing the maintenance of all the city-owned buildings and property. He comes to Fargo from International Falls, Minnesota, and yes, he said he had a worse winter than we did. Is that right, Brock? Welcome to the team, Brock. You're also going to decrease, make efficiency 20%, did you say? Yeah. Yeah. And finally, we are going to show a couple of short videos produced by the Communications Department Creative Services Division, one from the Forestry Department regarding tree planting, and another from Solid Waste Department Plastic Bag Recycling Challenge. We're going to start to make the opening statements a little bit with some videos since people love YouTube and videos.
When we start planting, the first thing we do is we find our location, and we call for locates, and you can see on the ground, they come out, locate where the underground utilities are, and then we judge where to plant off of that. We dig our hole. We want the hole bigger than our root system. The planting depth is very important. We want to find the root graft. We want that to be above ground. They need water. The roots do just as much as oxygen. After that, we cover it up. We stake the tree to support it. Then we put these water bags on. They hold about 15 gallons. Then we put mulch ring around it, and when it breaks down, it adds nitrogen to the soil.
Planting trees in the city is good. I mean, anyone in Fargo can tell you the wind can be pretty difficult. Anyone ever goes up to North Fargo versus South Fargo up on 52nd Avenue South there, the wind difference is tremendous. On top of like preventing wind from coming through or at least slowing it down, the roots of the tree are pretty vast, and they're going to lock the soil together pretty tightly. So it's pretty hard for soil to be pulled off on just a little bit of wind if you have a, you know, mature tree in the area. Another reason why we get flooding every year, trees pull up lots of water per day. Another reason why, it just looks good. I mean, you think of a place with absolutely no trees versus a place with trees. Obviously, I'm an arborist, and I'll take trees for that reason alone.
Last week, they had an event for the children, and they planted 87 trees in one of our parks. It was kind of fun. John, you'll like this one, plastic bags. See that number? So in the future, you'll see some videos, and we're going to highlight all the departments, show you different things, maybe educate the public a little bit what we do. We're not going to bring in the smells of methane, so you get that idea, but we are going to show you other ways, which landfill is very progressive, what our engineers do in the summertime, what happens throughout the community, and less of me talking and more videos going forward, which I think Commissioner Pepcorn will be happy with. So, is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda admitting items 14 from the consent agenda and moving items 28, 29 from consent agenda to regular agenda?
And Mr. Chair, does that include the public dialogue regarding the Wieland matter?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
In fact, Eric, do we need to do anything after the executive session? Any motions we need now, or you just want it in the regular agenda?
Yeah, as long as I wasn't here for the introductory remarks, but yes, with that being on the regular agenda, there'll be just some follow-up public conversation.
Just approving the order now, we're going to approve the consent later.
Just approving the order right now. And is there a motion to approve the minutes, or excuse me, the Order of Agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause? Nay? Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 6, 2019 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections or additions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A motion carried. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items 1 through 30 excluding items 14, 28, 29, which have been admitted and moved to the regular, which have been admitted or moved to the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Tony, why?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I'm.
Grinberg, you have to comment.
Item 9, I am not aware of the details, but I do work for NDSCS, so I'll declare a conflict of interest on item 9, so.
We'll have to move it then. We'll have to move 9 out if he doesn't want to hold on.
We'll vote it in separate then, yes. Okay. Okay, we'll move that to a vote after the rest of the consent agenda is done. And you said second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So I'll take a roll call vote on the consent agenda admitting item 9.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Do you have a motion on item 9, please?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
So is this?
You just abstain?
Abstain, yeah.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand? Mahoney?
Aye.
Regular agenda, I think this is the reason all these public servants are here today, but we have a presentation, Public Safety Compensation Study. Chiefs?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's good to be here in front of you tonight. This has been a long time coming. I think you remember last, last August with the passage of the, and the discussion around the budget, the topic of compensation for public safety came forward, and since that time, Chief Todd, myself, Jill Minett, and the other staff within the HR have been working diligently to, to work on this, the compensation for public safety, folks within the city of Fargo. Tonight, Jill will talk more about the details of it, but I just wanted to give you just a little perspective from the fire side of things of why we're where we're at and why we're looking at things. We've noticed a big change within the fire service in the last number of years. It's not just particular to Fargo, but other, other communities around the country as well. We're seeing a decline in the number of folks that actually come and take our tests that want to be firefighters. 20 years ago, we were looking somewhere between 300 and 400 folks that would come and take a test and hope to be a firefighter in a community and maybe get one of three to five jobs maybe. We've seen that number go down to this last February in the fire department anyway, where we had 25 people that showed up to take a firefighter test and exam. So the interest in the job is changing a little bit. I think the hours and things like that may have something to do with it. But we've also started to see an exodus from, of some of our, our strong employees here in the city of Fargo. They're leaving to go to other fire departments that actually are compensated at a higher level or can move up through the ranks and be compensated more quickly. And so we worked through this plan and got to where we're at. But we're also seeing folks not just leave to go to other fire departments, we're looking at private sector jobs. And in the last three years, we've had at least six, five or six people that have left and went to other private sector jobs because of pay and schedule and things like that. So I'm glad that we're here. I'm happy with the plan that's in front of you. I think there's a bunch of folks here that are interested in some of the details. I've shared a lot of it on the fire side with them, but I'll turn it over to Chief Todd.
Thank you, Chief Dirksen. Good evening, Mayor Mahoney and Commissioners. The police officers you see here this evening certainly came to show their interest and support in this agenda item, but mostly they're here because I asked them to come as an expression of gratitude to you for your willingness to listen to the challenges we have in recruitment and retention related to compensation. The topics of recruitment and retention are issues I've been speaking to the mayor, my portfolio holder, and the city administrators, Bruce and Mike, for quite some time now. I've foreseen a recruitment challenge continuing to grow for us in Fargo as Fargo has grown in population, job opportunities, and flourishing economy. Law enforcement is not as popular as it once was as a career choice, and the economy has provided plenty of other career opportunities for young people to choose from. In regard to both recruiting and retention, since I've become the chief, we've tried to provide a better and welcoming atmosphere as well as being inclusive in our leadership style. We've created officer committees to provide input on areas of work that affect them to include uniforms, beat structure, policy development, officer wellness, squad car setup, equipment, and a chief's leadership advisory committee representing all the work groups in the department that meet with me to discuss things relative to their work groups or to the department as a whole. You as a commission have also helped me create a better environment for the department by giving us badly needed personnel to catch up in staffing, giving us a new police station opportunity to move out of badly cramped facilities that we had outgrown. But one of the areas we've fallen behind in over the last couple of years is compensation. When we fall behind in compensation, my efforts at creating a positive work environment only go so far when officers can look to the jurisdictions on either side of us, West Fargo and Moorhead, and see that they have less calls for service and yet are paid more. That in and of itself becomes a morale issue and creates a retention challenge for me. On average, in the last four years, I have lost eight people per year who have resigned and gone on to different law enforcement agencies or occupations. Since we have fallen behind in compensation, just in the first quarter of this year, 2019, I have already lost 10 people. Most of them have said they can get paid the same amount or more doing a much less stressful job somewhere else. When it takes three to four months to recruit and test people, do background investigations, psychologically test them, polygraph them, medically test them to hire them, and then send them to three months of academy, and then send them to five months of training with a training officer before they're ever out on their own, losing people at this rate is not sustainable for us. Losing people we've invested significant training in, who have invaluable experience in investigating crime is detrimental to our department and its service to our community. My fellow officers here tonight and I are grateful to the mayor, the city administrators, and now you, the commissioners, for being willing to listen regarding to this issue and wanting to help take action to correct it. The mayor asked for a public safety compensation study to see how the police department and fire department in Fargo compared regionally and locally. Jill Minett, Jen Crater, and Jennifer Lyons in HR have done a tremendous job of collecting the data, which has been expansive, and meeting with Chief Dirksen and I and going over the different options, and we're extremely grateful for their hard work. On behalf of our officers, your officers, and supervisors, thank you for taking the time to review it and being willing to have it as a commission agenda item tonight. I'll turn it over to Jill.
Thank you, chiefs, and good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As the chiefs indicated, the Public Safety Compensation Study has been really an extensive study over the last several months, and so we won't cover all of the detail. We'd be here all evening, but we want to cover some of the highlights that helped to demonstrate how we landed on the recommendations that we, that we did. So to start off with, we began developing a survey last fall and invited 28 cities throughout the region to participate in the survey. And you can see from the states and the cities listed within those states, our survey actually included 11 states across our region. So we tried to be as comprehensive as we could and to find cities that were similar in size and scope with a good cross-section of some cities that are larger and some that are smaller. The purpose of the study was, of course, to determine how our pay and benefits compete with those within the region for our public safety positions, to study parity between police officers and firefighter positions within the city. In other words, at, at entry levels of the position, are police officers paid higher than firefighters or vice versa? Our public safety positions comprise approximately 30% of the city of Fargo's entire regular workforce. So as you're all aware, it is important that we're being competitive in terms of our, our compensation and benefits. So I want to touch on just some of the high-level study results and, and high-level recommendations to follow before we really get into the detail of looking at the police officer position and the firefighter position. So in general, we found that our starting rate of pay or our minimums for police and fire positions are really pretty competitive locally and within the region. We found that we begin to lag the local and regional market or fall behind that market in the pay ranges for police and fire positions really fairly early in those ranges, and we'll look at that in just a minute. We also found that our highest level of pay or our maximums for police and fire positions are lagging the local market, and for many positions, we're lagging the regional market as well. And so our recommendations, again, just at a high level, we'll look at more detail in just a minute. We are recommending that all positions of police and fire positions remain in the current grade that they're assigned, but that we create public safety pay ranges where we increase the, the range spread, in other words, the spread between the minimum and the maximum from where it's currently at, at a 30 to 36% spread to a 36 to 51% spread depending on the position. And we would accomplish this by expanding the top of the pay ranges for those ranges or grades assigned to public safety positions. We would accelerate the movement between the steps to allow for higher step increases. So right now, when someone moves from step one to two and two to three, they're receiving approximately a 2% to 3% increase as a step increase, and we have found that we're just not keeping up with the local and regional market in that way. So we're recommending that we accelerate the movement. In other words, essentially, we're moving two steps at a time to allow for approximately a 5% to 6% step increase as opposed to the current 2% to 3%. The recommendations, the findings and the recommendations were reviewed with the Position Evaluation Committee on May 9th, and so what you see before you has been reviewed and approved for recommendation by the PEC as well. So let's take a look now more specifically at the police officer position. And so as you can see, the way that this is laid out, the chart starts with the city of Fargo on top and looking at step one or our starting rates of pay all the way through step seven on this slide. You can see how we compare locally with West Fargo and Moorhead and with those two cities' average together. So the blue represents our, the comparison of the local average. So where you see the dollar difference looking at step one, right now, our starting rate of pay for a police officer at $54,142 is just over $1,000 higher than the local market or 2% above. Down below in the orange, you see how the city of Fargo compares to the regional average. So the regional average is approximately $55,032. Our starting rate of pay is about $890 below that regional average or about 1.6% below. And so you see that data all the way across through step seven on this screen. And what's important to note, as you look at, at starting at step three, you can see that we begin to lag or fall behind the local market by about 1% at this point already. And the regional market, we are about 5% below that regional average. As you move farther along through to step seven, you can see we're now lagging the market by about 6% locally and the regional market by about 7%. On this next slide, this just shows you now the top end of, of that range, the current range that police officers are, are in. So starting with step eight, again, you can see, as we look at the upper steps, we are lagging the local market anywhere from 5% to 10%. The regional market, a little less of a gap there, where we're lagging the market anywhere from about 1% to about 6%. One other thing of note, in the range spread column, the range spread again just represents the spread between the min and the max. And so as we studied both the local market and the regional market, we found that many other cities that are, are within the, the region have, are working with a larger range spread of anywhere from 40-some to 50-some percent. Ours currently is at 36%. And again, that was one of the findings of, that we're proposing by extending the top of the range, that we now expand that range spread. So the next slide is really just intended to give you a visual representation of all the numbers that we just looked at. The blue line represents the city of Fargo, green, West Fargo, orange, Moorhead, and red is regional data. So you can see for the police officer position, as you move across, and again, step three is really that cut over where the, the city of Fargo begins to lag both the local and the regional market. So that's a current look at, at how we compare to that, to that market. So I want to talk a little bit about our specific recommendations for the police officer position, and then we'll take a look at the impact of that. So again, the recommendation is that police officers would remain in a grade 12, but we would increase the, the spread of the range from 36 to 48% by expanding the steps. The step increases would accelerate. Again, we would move officers through the range at essentially the equivalent of two steps rather than one step, resulting in about a 5% to 6% increase on the step increase date. And what this does is creates nine steps, and it would take eight years for officers to reach the maximum. So if we look at the chart specifically as we have laid out the proposed grades, now you can see as we compare to the regional market in steps one to seven, we stay ahead of that local market. We start just slightly lower than the regional average rates of pay, but as you can see, moving through the range with those proposed steps, we now exceed the market or lead the market in most of the early steps. And then as we get to the upper steps of the new police officer range, again, starting with step eight, we now would exceed that market in step eight and nine by about 8% to 9%. That starts to level off as we get closer to the maximum, and you can see the maximum of our new range compared to the local market, we would be just under 3% ahead of the local market and about 6% ahead of the regional market, making our rates of pay much more competitive locally and regionally. Again, that range spread I mentioned earlier, we would bump that up to 48%, and that's how we, we have the result of being competitive throughout the entire range. And this is just a visual again that shows then how the, the city of Fargo in blue has shifted to lead the local market and in, in most areas, leading the regional market as well in pay. Any questions on the police officer position?
Mr. Grinberg?
Jill, correct me if I memory, didn't we add a step in 2017 to address the mid-range officers?
Yes, a few years ago, we did bump up the top. So we expanded from step 11 and added a 12 and a 13. That was a couple of years ago for police, and then just this year for firefighters as well.
Sure. Pepcorn?
And this might be a question for Bruce, but how much is this all going to cost and how are we going to pay for it? Just the easy questions, Bruce, that's all I ask. Or maybe Jill, you can answer that.
So I do have a slide coming up that shows the cost. Would you like to jump there now, or do you want to?
No, that's, that's okay. No.
Let's go through fire first.
Okay. Very good. We'll get there shortly. So looking at the firefighter position, again, the, the data is laid out in the same way. So you can see that within fire, when we look at our local market, we look like we're fairly competitive in those lower steps. However, if you notice in step three, so at year two, the firefighters in the city of Moorhead already begin to exceed the rate of pay that we have here in Fargo. So we look, we look okay compared to the average, but Moorhead at step three has already begun to exceed our pay. The, compared to the regional average, again, you can see that we are lagging that regional market anywhere from 10% to 17% in these lower steps.
Can I ask a question, Jill?
Yes.
How come that is so much higher? Is there an explanation for that being even more high than the police?
Yes. So what we found as we studied both police officer and firefighter positions is that many cities have several levels of both positions, both police officers and firefighters. And so while we have one level, we are comparing to those cities that, that have, in some cases, three and four levels. So in order to come up with a regional average, because under the assumption that our firefighters and police officers are doing the same work that's just spread over those levels in other cities, so we averaged those rates of pay within the region and looked at that overall average. You can also see, looking at our local market, we have one city that's leading a bit more substantially than the other within the local market. And so that's why, if you look at it just strictly from an average standpoint, we don't look too bad in those first four or five steps, but when you look more closely, we are falling behind already at step 11. Okay, then looking at the, the top of the pay range, steps eight through maximum, again, currently currently, you can see that we are lagging the local market anywhere from probably one to six percent. At maximum, we're about one percent below locally. And the regional market, we're ranging from two percent to ten percent below that regional So, just a visual that shows you how we're comparing locally and with the region, again, at step three, we're already following, falling below one of the cities within our local market. So, our, our recommendation for firefighters, and I'm actually going to have the chief speak to, to a part of this, the firefighters would remain in grade eleven. We would expand the range spread, as we discussed with police officers, from thirty-six to about a fifty-one percent range spread. And just like with officers, we would increase the step increases. In other words, we'd accelerate those. So, moving essentially the equivalent of two steps throughout, throughout the, the range. However, what we found was a norm within the industry, and I mentioned earlier, that we found several levels of police officer and firefighter. With firefighters, it is common to have a level of driver or apparatus operator, they can be referred to. And so, as you can see, we're recommending that we cap our firefighters at sixty-eight thousand and that the drivers, so those established as drivers, would be able to continue to grow through the maximum of the range. So, our firefighters would have seven steps. Our drivers would continue on through the remaining ten steps. And I'm going to ask the chief to speak to that being an industry norm.
Thanks, Jill. As Jill alluded to, in, in the study, we found most cities had a, a driver rank or apparatus operator rank. And what we did, and we looked at this, we looked at, at, when we got to step seven, we were about right where we needed to be within the local and the regional market until we looked a little bit deeper into the driver rank. And we saw then we started to fall behind again. And so, we thought at this point, we, we could stop the firefighter ranks at that stops, at step seven. And if they were one of the people that were designated to be a driver, then they would continue on and have three additional steps to move through in their career to, to compensate them for the job that they're doing. And it'd be about in that timeline within their careers where they're going to be mostly driving. There may be a time here and there, ahead of time where they may not be, but a majority of the time, they're going to be driving the apparatus. And why that's important is because of, of the different specialized equipment that we carry on there, that the drivers are responsible for maintaining and looking over on a daily basis. But there's also a difference of driving a forty-to-eighty-thousand-pound truck, lights and sirens through the city, through traffic to get to an emergency. That does require a little bit of skill when you're trying to navigate a nearly fifty-foot-long ladder truck that weighs nearly eighty-thousand pounds and trying to get to a, a place in a, in a quick manner that doesn't just come overnight. And that's a, a whole lot more concern and, uh, stress that's placed on a person, and that's why we looked at that compensation, and it falls within that industry norm.
Thank you, Chief. So, as we look at the numbers, and I'm going to move through these fairly quickly, this is, this is all included in the packet as well. You can see now the impact of the proposed range structure. So, where before we began lagging the, the local market at step three, we're now able to stay about seven to ten percent above the local market and within, you know, one to ten percent of the, of the regional market as well. Our, our drivers, when you look at the regional average, that includes the driver level as well. So, while the proposed rates look like we are, are, you know, significantly below the regional market, I want to point that out, that that is because of the data includes that driver level as well. Looking at the upper steps, again, we're able to stay ahead of the local market and remain competitive with the regional market. You can see in the, the new maximum in red for the driver is at seventy-five thousand, seven forty-one. I'm just going to flip back. The firefighter level would be at that sixty-eight thousand, one seventy at step seven. And so, looking at the chart, this gives you a, just a visual as to how that proposed salary structure now pushes our rates of pay, our steps above the local market, makes us much more competitive with the regional market as well.
So, now, show us the cost.
Okay, we're, we're almost there. So, we also had to look at all of the positions within the, uh, both structures, within police and fire. And again, the data that you saw on the slides for police officers and firefighters is included in the packet. So, this is just a, a very brief summary. For sergeants and lieutenants, the, the positions would remain sergeants in a grade fifteen, lieutenants in a seventeen. We would apply the, the same concept, expanding that, that range from a thirty to a forty-two percent spread. Step increases would be applied as normal, steps one through three, and then we would begin to accelerate at the sergeant level. So, sergeant and, or for both, I should say sergeant and lieutenant, both positions would include nine steps, and it would take eight years to get to maximum. The deputy chief would remain in a grade twenty. Range spread would increase. Again, the step increases would be as normal, steps one through three, and then we would begin to accelerate the growth through that range. So, there would be eight steps for deputy chief and seven years to maximum. These promoted positions, we looked at both in terms of the regional market, but also in terms of internal equity, knowing if we make adjustments with police officers and firefighters, that we have to be aware of any compression that we create with those promoted positions as well. Fire positions, fire captain, deputy fire marshal, battalion chief, again, remaining in, in the current grades that they're in, expanding the range spread by bumping out the maximum. Step increases, just like the sergeant and, and lieutenant, we would move through steps one through three, just as we do now, but then would begin to accelerate that growth. So, for those positions, nine steps, eight years to maximum. Assistant fire chief, just as we did with the deputy police chief, would remain in the current grade. We would apply the same concept, kind of normal movement, step ones through three, but then accelerated growth through eight steps, seven years to maximum. The plan for implementation, and this was a recommendation that was made to the PEC, and the PEC supported this plan, so this is a consideration for you as well, that we would implement the new pay plan ranges effective December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, which was actually the start of the first pay period in twenty-nineteen. And then, we would apply the new step rates on the step increase date for twenty-nineteen retroactively for those steps that have already occurred within twenty-nineteen. And now, to the information that you asked for, Commissioner Pepcar. So, what does this cost? You can see by position, we've, we've indicated the overall net cost of the market adjustment. So, for the police department, it would be a total of three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, one twenty-two. For fire, again, you see the breakdown by position, the total cost being a hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, six ninety for the fire department. So, a combined total of four-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, eight twelve. And we arrived at these numbers by looking at the cost of implementing the new plan, but also factored in what the cost of step increases that would have occurred throughout twenty-nineteen regardless of implementing the plan. So, what you see before you is a, a net cost of implementing the new pay plan.
Commissioner Gary.
Did you analyze going forward, though? Year one is one thing, but it's compounding, interest then. So, six percent on top of six percent for the next year is quite a lot to add to these numbers, and that could really lot of control quite quickly when you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Sure. Yes, that, that certainly is a consideration in your decision-making. We looked at annualizing over the course of one year. We didn't attempt to project that out over, you know, the next five to ten years. But you're right, anytime we have an increase of this nature or any other increase that, that does, you know, that, that stays with us then in future years as well.
I'd like to see a five to ten year, if I could. They should be pretty easy.
Commissioner Grinberg.
Thank you. What is, are we expected to take action tonight or is this information?
We're expected to take action tonight. It's been referred to the PEC. PEC sent it up to us as a recommendation, and we gave it to you as these are findings. Both chiefs have been, and all our police and fire have been very patient with us, but we feel this is just what we need to make.
A couple of questions then, if I'm following the dates. So, this would be the two thousand nineteen budget that we are in.
Yes.
We'd be adding four-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand to the budget, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, moving forward into twenty-twenty, we would obviously assume that rolls into twenty-twenty with any other cost of living increases.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I got it now. So, question then, is this, in your opinion, as leading our HR department for the city of Fargo and the work you've done, you know, three years from now, if the other cities add and they go above us, then we're back in the same boat. My, my question is, is this kind of a, a five-year assumption that we're going to, it's common practice in the past for the city of Fargo, that every now and then, we have this market adjustment discussion? I think it's really important. I mean, if you were to survey the public, they would say, take care of your police and fire. There's no doubt about that. We can't lose people. And so, we need to retain our talent. But my point is, do we, is this kind of a common practice that we go through every so many years?
Yes, so, every three years, we do a, a regional market study of benchmark positions. So, beyond just public safety positions, we're looking at about a hundred positions across the city that we compare within the region, really with these same cities that we've surveyed for the public safety comp study. So, we do that regularly every three years. This study was much more comprehensive in terms of looking at every single step and comparing ourselves throughout the region at, at how other cities progress in their ranges or their, or their step and grade systems. So, we do study every three years. With, with market, it's never a one-time study and done. We always have to come back and look at and make those comparisons because we do know that some of these cities that we surveyed are slated for, you know, three-plus percent increase as they, as we roll forward to future years.
Sure. So, then, the question, I don't sit on finance, how are we going to pay for it? Where's our budget status? Do we have surplus we're moving this year? I mean, who's, who's going to address that question?
And one of the things commissioners have to understand is West Fargo, with Bernie Dardis, just came on, and they made a salary adjustment of their police and fire. So, that's one of the things that suddenly we were out of market in the area. Our firefighters came to the survey and showed us we're under market. Their police force came too and showed us. So, it's, it's an adjustment that we need to make. We lost ten firefighters, we lost ten policemen, so.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. That is the question, and, and as city administrator, I agree as well that this is really important to do. We're approaching June in a budget cycle twenty-nineteen that we didn't budget for this, so how do you deal with that? In cases like this, I would presume we would have to come forward to you with a proposed mid-year budget adjustment. And right off the top of my head, a couple of things that we've been talking about with the police chief and the finance director. One, generally, over the course of a year, because of vacancies in the police department, they don't expend all their salary and benefits. So, that would be one potential source. And then, generally as well, throughout a budget year, we end up with a, a net positive budget balance. That's what we'd try to look at and bring back a recommended mid-year budget adjustment to you, show you that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pepcar.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, but getting back to what Tony was talking about, we have been aware of this issue for probably two or three years. We've, I mean, all of us, we've kind of known this, and it's taken a while to refine a good resolution. That's part of the reason that, that this is unusual, that we've had to do this. But from my perspective, we have to do this, we have to be competitive. And to me, for, this is one of the fundamentals of, of city government is public safety. We have to be, we got to be strong, and, and we're have, having competition issues. So, it's, it, it's a combination of things. But we knew, at the beginning, we were strong, but then, in the middle, we, we, we had some, we, we knew that. And so, it took a while, and I, I think we're very fortunate. I think Jill does a great job, and we're very fortunate to have her on our staff to be able to look at compensation, not just of our immediate neighbors, but where we sit in the other states and also similar-sized cities i- in our area. So, I, I think it's very good, it's very well done, and I, I, we do have to be prudent how we spend our money, but this is, this is bread and butter, fundamental, a local government, and, and we've, if, we've got the best and, and we have to compensate them or we're going to start losing them, and, and we can't have that. Thank you.
Commissioner Strand.
I make the recommended motion.
Sir, second.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Gary.
Yeah, so, we're talking about pay. Do we talk about, or do we look at benefits at all? Time off, medical, dental, retirement?
We did study benefits as well, and so, we have a lot of great data from the region. We know that our benefits are competitive. What, we intend to use that data as we look to our renewals now for twenty-twenty. And so, you know, if we have any recommendations there, that would be a part of benefit renewal for the coming year. We're not recommending any changes or enhancements to our benefits at this time as a result of the study.
That'd be an important discussion as well, to talk about the benefits that we have compared to other places. With, for example, the fire, step seven, we were locally here about minus three, regionally minus thirteen. Step thirteen, we were oh, negative one and a half, we were negative two and a half regionally. After this increase, we're above eleven-point-three and one-point-seven respective, above eight-point-two and above seven regionally. That's a large increase. Was there a discussion of maybe phasing that in or a less of an increase to make us not exactly the top of the ladder or, or maybe not five percent above the top of the ladder?
Uh, yes, so, I'm going to move back to that side, your slide. You're looking specifically at firefighter positions.
I go down fire, so yes, that's fine.
Okay.
So, for step seven there, you can see we're eleven-point-three, eleven-point-four percent after the adjustment. Regionally, we're still very competitive, that's, that's fine. Then, the next slide will be step thirteen, and we're almost nine percent and almost eight percent above everybody, you know, above the average. And the next slide, obviously, will show you where we sit compared to everybody else.
So...
And we're far above the top.
You know, in addition to what you're, you're seeing, a summary of the data, and so, as we were analyzing the data, we were looking at specific cities throughout our region as well. So, looking at where Sioux Falls is, looking at where all of the cities are placed. And so, you know, again, as, as you saw with the local market, there are times where we appear to be above the average in the local market, but there are cities that we know we're directly competing with where we're still below that rate of pay. So, you know, what I can tell you without looking at every cell here, there was a lot of analysis behind the summary that you see in front of you as well. So, with each of those steps, we were looking back not only at the averages, but we were looking at Sioux Falls, at all of the other cities that we collected data from, and trying to, trying to get to a point where we were ahead of market at a, a rate that we felt was necessary to remain competitive locally and regionally. And sometimes, that, that was pushed by the local market more so than regional. Other times, it was pushed more so by the, the regional market and specific cities within the region that we know we're competing with.
And the other thing we don't have is we know certain negotiations in Minnesota's side have three percent raises, three percent raises. So, they are going to change over the next two years. So, it may look like we're high now, but in two years, we might be just barely above. So, to your point, yeah, it may look like that, but what happens is the other entities are actually going to step up and make some adjustments as well. Commissioner Gary.
And, and I agree with Dave, we need to make an adjustment up. We've known we've been low. And I'm telling all the guys here, that, all the guys and girls here, that I do support raising the amount. I would like to see it during the regular budget cycle and not mid-year when I have no idea how that affects other things. You, the fire department, I know, is asking for equipment, is asking for improvements to their buildings for more employees. This all fits within that. Maybe hiring less employees is, is less important than giving the established folks more dollars in your pocket. So, us taking this out of the budget cycle, I think, is a mistake. There's a bigger picture here. I don't know why necessarily we're doing it today, and I also don't know why we're retroacting it. I would like to see a five to ten-year impact to the budget with what we're doing because that four-hundred thousand or whatever it is for the fire department, that's just year one. Once everyone gets that pay increase, then we had another six-hundred percent on top of that. Once everyone gets that pay increase, then we had another 600% on top of that for all your steps, that goes up dramatically really quickly. We could have doubled the budget within a decade if we do that. So I support an increase. I wish we wouldn't have done it so quickly or at this time. I think we should do it in the budget cycle. So I don't support doing it right now. I wanna see more data.
So what happened last year when we got the budget done, one of the issues came up, is the fire came up with the survey that we looked at. And then Police Chief Todd also has some issues, is losing some personnel. So part of the reason it's a mid-adjustment, last fall, I, as mayor, said we'd look into it, and we, as commissioners, said we'd all look into this. So yes, we don't usually like to make mid-year adjustments like this, Commissioner Garrick, but it's one of those things that we have to respond to the market. And yeah, it's probably six months earlier than we'd like to, but it's just one of those things in which we talk to the people working for us. And so this is what we're gonna address at this time. And that's why we know it'll have impacts going into the future. And personnel is the most expensive part of running the city. But we also want to remain competitive in the market. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Since Commissioner Grinberg and I joined, the commission, there have been two issues that have come to us over the time. And first of all, initially, back when we started, the notion was that payroll was addressed mid-year. And that we went through our budget, and then we saw where we're at with our budget. And then mid-year, we would look at payroll. And we heard from lots of you folks out there that you felt like you were treated as a secondary priority. And I commend our commission for addressing that immediately, two years ago or so, to get to the point where our cycles are the same, where our wages and our compensation packages are part of our full benefit, our full budget. A year ago, when we were approving our budget, we had a room full of people. And Eric Eisenlaw, am I saying your name right? And your folks in your row there, you had worked with us, had met with us commissioners, you had met with administration. You alerted us in an immensely respectful fashion of your concerns about the status of wages in the fire department relative to the region. And so when we were all looking into this room full of you folks, it was real clear to us that you had a concern. And that's when the commission decided to do this, undertake this public safety compensation study and to roll the police department into it. We all know that there's not much bigger in our budgets than people. You know, our personnel, our compensation, our wages and salaries are a good chunk of any public entity's budget. But we also know that we're as good as our people. And we're only as good as them. And if we don't have quality people out there, and if we're continuing to, continuing down a path of letting you think that you might have better opportunities elsewhere, we're remiss for letting that happen if it's affordable and doable and feasible on our end. So I commend Eric and your team for bringing this to us in the fashion you did a year ago. And here's where we've landed. I commend the city departments and staff and mayor for rolling the police department into this. And I wholeheartedly support this notion of getting our wages and our compensation to the level of where it at least needs to be.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Oh.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Take a five-minute break and come back at 6:10. Back to order. We're gonna go to public hearings, a community development block grant and home programs 2019 action plan and budget, and amendments to the 2018 action plan activities and budget, five-year consolidated plan activity. This is gonna be by Nicole Kutchfield.
Yeah, I wanted to, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to introduce Tia Brassa. I'm not sure if all of you have had a chance to meet Tia and introduce her to the community as well. She started with us in August of last year. I believe this is her first time presenting to you. And we're pleased to present to you our 2019 annual plan, as well as some overall program updates. As you know, with a reorganization and some staffing changes, we've had a look at some of the HUD program financing and funding. And so Tia's gonna run through kind of a status update. I'll be here for any extra questions that she can't address.
Thank you, Nicole. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So this will be a public hearing, but I also want to give you a brief presentation on the status of our HUD programs and then move into the public hearing for the 2019 action plan and some amendments. So right now, we're halfway through the public process for the 2019 home and CDVG annual action plan and prior year amendments. They're both running on the same timeline and under the same 30-day public comment period. We are also developing and implementing a CDVG workout plan to help bring our program into compliance. We currently have more funds in our line of credit than we are supposed to, and I'll visit a little bit more about that in some upcoming slides. And that will also involve restructuring and redesigning some of the program to be in yearly compliance. And then we are also preparing for our next five-year consolidated plan, which covers the years 2020 through 2024. So there were some changes this year as a result of untimely expenditures of HUD funds. So what HUD does is every year, they conduct what's called their timely expenditure test. It automatically occurs every March 2nd. It's a calculated ratio of the CDVG funds that you have in your line of credit. So no more than one and a half times the amount of your current year's grant may be in that line of credit. And Fargo failed that test in 2019. I believe everyone here has received a memo on that when it did happen. So some of the reasons why that occurred are projects not coming to fruition. You have an applicant that has a project that's not shovel-ready or fully ready to go. Or they fall behind on their timeline, or there's a low capacity in awardees. And that's in combination with limited city staff resources. There are a lot of small projects right now that we have to administer from last year, and it's kind of doubling on top of the 2019 projects that we are proposing. While failing is not uncommon, it happens regionally. I used to work for the city of Morehead and experienced it twice there. Grand Forks has experienced it. We can get through it. It's not that difficult. Failing twice could result in withholding of CDVG funds. And that is something that I haven't experienced, but I don't think that's gonna happen. So to pass the next timely expenditure test, the city must stay focused and on schedule. Choose large projects to expend funds quickly, so 150,000 or more are what are being proposed. Choosing quick and easy spending activities such as property acquisition, public facilities improvements, affordable housing development, that type of work. And partnering with organizations that are prepared to quickly and correctly finish projects by February 2020. So that will be just right before our March test again. And part of how we are gonna get through that is the development and implementation of a workout plan, which is required by HUD for grantees that don't meet that timeliness test. And we actually finished our draft today and submitted it to HUD for review. So it'll kind of go back and forth a little bit until it's fully ready to be submitted. And what that includes are scheduled activities, milestones, and budgets, and projected drawdowns from our CDVG line of credit. And once that's fully complete, we'll make that available for everybody to see. It will be on our website. So we're really excited that we were able to submit that today. It shows a really good outlook for getting to the next goal for March 2020. So once Fargo is back on track, there might be more flexibility to work with some of those smaller projects and organizations that might take a little bit more city staff resources. So jumping into what this public hearing is actually for tonight is the 2019 plan and amendments. This is the timeline. It's already gone through city, our CD committee and our planning commission. They've approved it to bring it forward to city commission tonight. And as I mentioned earlier, we're right in the middle of our public comment period, which runs from May 13th through June 12th. So we'll come back again on June 17th. It'll be a consent item, though, for final approval after the 30-day public comment period is complete. And another thing to note, too, is that our HUD programs run on a May 1 to April 30th timeline. So we just finished our 2018 year on May 1st, and now are in our 2019 year. So there was a change in direction after the timeliness test. We initially had a community development subcommittee look at all of the applications that we received. They prioritized them. They selected a handful of projects that they thought would be good in combination with city staff. But in light of the failed test and conversations with HUD, we needed to minimize the number of projects that were selected. So on the next slide, I'll show you what projects were selected. You'll see that most of them are more than 150,000. And the projects focus on housing and homelessness, which are HUD's primary goals anyhow. So here's our estimated resources for 2019. It's just a little over 2.2 million. And these are the activities. Every dollar is allocated, so we know where we're at in that timeline as far as meeting that timely expenditure next year. And this is in your packet also. And we are also bringing forward some proposed amendments for canceling a couple of activities that didn't come to fruition, revising some activities, and then a new goal for affordable housing development in the five-year plan. So before we go into public comment, I just wanted to give you a couple of details about the future administration of HUD programs. To achieve that annual HUD compliance, it'd be good to focus on the larger projects, like 150,000 or more limit the small projects. Partner with experienced organizations and agencies, and continue to use a mixed method approach, which might include the formal application process that we're already doing, but also those conversations that we're having with community partners and more public meetings and more outreach. So we're constantly hearing things and having a queue list of projects ready to go in case a project does fail, that we can move on to another project. So we can keep those CDVG funds moving constantly, so we don't end up in this situation again. So that was everything that I was gonna present to you this evening. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them. Otherwise, we can open it up for public comment.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak about this budget and the grants that we're going forward with? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Hearing none, we'd close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
No action required.
No action?
Mayor, there's no motion, no motion this evening. It's just a public hearing. Then we'll come back, May, June 17th.
So we are gonna come in compliance. You're fully confident of that, and you've got the steps to go forward, right?
Yes.
Call any other comments? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. And Nicole, I'd just like to thank you for your work. You're doing a terrific job. You've been here a little over a year, I'm guessing?
August 1st will be a year.
It feels like, you know, you're just commending you for your work in your department, and you fit in so well. And thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Keep up the good work. Liquor license. Steve's around. Application by Beerbomb, doing business as Beerbomb, for a class GH alcoholic beverage license at 402 Broadway North. Steve's bragged to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you is an application for a class GH alcoholic beverage license. That's a beer and wine license, does not allow a physical bar, and the food sales have to exceed the alcohol sales. We've done the background check through our application process, and it comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the liquor control board.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Real quick.
Mr. Garrick?
What's the price of this one? Is it limited or capped for these?
No, there's no cap on this license. The initial issuance fee is $800.
What's an FAA license?
FAA license, the initial issuance fee is $100,000.
I'm just making the point to folks, if you just wanted your beer and wine at your restaurant instead of an FAA license, this is a great option for that.
FAA license is a full alcohol. The equivalent one at this level is an F license, which is 3,000. And there are no caps on either one of those.
Very good.
There are plenty of licenses available.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
C, application by Brew Bird, doing business as Brew Bird, for a class F alcoholic beverage license at 30 University Drive North.
And again, as Commissioner said, this is a class F license. It's a full alcohol license, does not allow that bar. Food sales must exceed the alcohol sales. We've done the background check on this one. Also, there were a couple of issues, but they were kind of dated. And so they fell outside of our range of concern. So it does come to you with a recommendation of approval from the liquor control board.
And you said this one cost how much?
3,000 is the initial fee.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
D, transfer class FAA golf alcoholic beverage license from BCC Osgood Holdings to doing business as Nine Iron Bar and Grill to Brickhouse Tavern LLC as Brutus Clubhouse, to be located at 4,400 Clubhouse Drive. Steve's bragged to explain.
So this is our golf course license. It does have to be at a PGA-designed or level golf course. So it can't be a, you know, a gold putt or a, you know, bumper putt or something like that. The class, this FAA golf license costs $60,000 for the initial fee. This is the fifth operator we've had out at Osgood. And so we're hoping that this one will catch on and really become something solid out there. Again, we've done the background check. There were a couple of issues. And again, they were dated also. So I don't know if there's any other questions on this one.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Bruce Krupp, do you wanna speak to this application? It's your neighborhood bar? No? Close public hearings. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I also have to make an endorsement. So it's Brickhouse. They have several locations, a couple in South Morehead. The Blue Cheese Wings, they're the best hot wings in town. So I will drive from North Fargo to their South Fargo branch. So my prediction is they'll do very well at Osgood.
Conflict of interest? Conflict of interest. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand? Mahoney?
Aye.
And long as you're up there, Steve, we can go through the state water commission request costs reimbursement for FM diversion flood project cost, $6,421,825, uh, $25.21.
So I'm covering this for Kent. The 6.4 million expenditure, number eight, 3.4 million of that is for in-town levies. And 2.9 million of that is for land purchases for the FM diversion.
And then we also have cost of 59,000. You know what that's for?
That's Oxbow.
Okay.
I'll move 33A.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Move 32B.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Changed your way.
Four, recommendation to authorize staff to submit request on Roar's development for tax increment financing for the redevelopment of the property located northeast of University Drive and 11th Avenue North and city's financial advisors for review. Action was delayed from the 4/22/19 regular meeting. Jim Gomor to explain.
Commissioner Strand asked me to clarify your actions last year related to the renewal plan on this particular block. And this renewal plan was authorized to not include the tax increment financing district. But there were four blocks where Roar's had requested that we work on renewal plans with the possibility of a future tax increment financing district. You looked at that in July of 2018 and authorized us to begin work on four blocks. In November, we had completed the plans for three blocks. I had suspended work of the Newman and Roar's block until that zoning was resolved. But three of those blocks, we had completed renewal plans. Since then, four dilapidated houses were demolished within those renewal areas west of, in the western part of the Roseville neighborhood. And three additional houses were demolished this spring. So I just wanted to have that background that you had looked at that particular block in the past, and I didn't cover that at the last meeting. What we have now is Roar's request for tax increment financing assistance for a housing project. One of the things you could also do with renewal plan is, in addition to providing some assistance for the developer, undertake activities that could benefit the neighborhood, things that are eligible, our acquisition of property, demolition of property, and public facilities. And so if, as we draft this plan, what I had anticipated doing is bringing forward an option to use a portion of the TIF money to acquire and demolish or acquire for rehab other homes in the Roseville neighborhood as a way to promote some single-family housing. Commissioner Strand and I met with the Roseville Neighborhood Board last week, asked them for their input on this, and they indicated they were still opposed to any tax increment financing district in this area. I know there's a representative of the Roseville... for their input on this, and they indicated they were still opposed to any tax increment financing district in here, in this area. We, I know there was a representative of the Roosevelt Neighborhood here this evening, as well as the developer, and so I guess we're kind of back to, where do you want to go with this? Do you want us to proceed with the renewal plan, or do you want to reject the request?
Question.
Grinberg?
Jim, part of your, your presentation and what we've talked about in the past, would this also could include helping seed the land trust that's been talked about with the Community Development Fund in particular?
I, I think it could, because the land acquisition is an eligible activity, as well as demolition. So it'd probably be two things to look at. One would be acquiring dilapidated house somewhere else in the neighborhood, acquiring that site, clearing it, and making it available to a land trust. We could also have discussions with Roar's about the proposed townhomes, whether or not any of those lots could be acquired and incorporated into a land trust. So, you know, we need to really get some direction, whether we want to go forward with some of these ideas or not.
So, Mr. Chairman, then, so tonight is just to move it forward, to come up with those options, come back and present?
Yeah, if, if you move forward tonight, probably the earliest, we would be back to you with the renewal plan, a development agreement, and everything would be July 15th. It takes some time.
Mr. Garrick?
In order, in order to acquire land for the land trust, would the plot have to be within the TIF district?
It would have to be within the renewal plan area, which I would, which we could make quite large and cover the whole neighborhood, even though the TIF district was smaller. So, no, it doesn't have to be in the TIF district. It has to be in renewal plan area.
And the reality, this is just a look to see if a TIF is reasonable in this area, and what our advisors are supposed to do is come back and give us that financial analysis. It then goes through a tax exempt committee and then comes back to us?
That's correct. It would go to the tax exempt committee, and so Roar's will have to request a specific dollar amount and activities. We would see that those are eligible. We, our financial advisor would look to see if they need the money, to see if it's needed to make the project feasible, can like, they can look at the return with and without the assistance, and then make a recommendation on whether or not this would proceed if it did not receive assistance.
And I guess Commissioners need to know, I've been approached a little bit about how the delay is going to possibly move the, the bill back here for, if we push it back too far. So you're going to work as quickly as you can to get back the, the report. Is that right, Jim?
I think they were hoping for a 25-month build on this. It's a, it's a $40 million project all in. I think it's a, you know, rather large project. The earliest you'll be able to, probably, by the time we get the financial review, give the planning commission, accounting, the schools, a 30-day comment period, again, it can be July 15th, and I think they were hoping for 25 months. They're already probably a little bit short, but.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, but I'm not going to make the recommended motion, because I, what I'd like to have happen is to have the proposal go to the financial advisors for review, and also to go to the tax exempt review committee. But the rest of it, I'm not, the, the rest of the motion was to have a renewal plan and all that kind of stuff. I, I think that should be, that's in the future. But to me, I think the, the next step should be to have the proposal reviewed and to have the tax exempt review committee look at it. Jim, I don't know if that's, that's the motion I'd like to make. Do, do you want to have this more specific about the redevelopment? Because I think that's a separate issue.
I mean, I think we could be back to you in about a month, or, but the renewal plan requires certain amount of public hearings and notice, and so, you know, if we don't, it's going to be eight weeks from whenever we decide to start on the renewal plan and creation of the TIF district before we'd be able to get back to you for any action. We could certainly look at the feasibility in the short term, but that would delay the project.
Does a renewal project delay it? If you went through a TIF and a TIF was recommended, wouldn't they just proceed?
In order, again, in order to create the TIF district, there's some 30-day comment periods, and so the TIF plan and, or district is within your adoption of the renewal plan, and there are various hearing notices on that. And so it's even hard to get it back to you by July 15. It doesn't take that long to write the renewal plan, because we had done some background research before, but the approval process is kind of outlined in state law, and so with notices to the county and, and such. So, you know, if we were back here in a month and you said, yes, they need the money, let's start the renewal plan now, the earliest we'd be approving a development agreement would be in August.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple other questions. So the Newman Center project, that's a separate, totally separate thing. Is that correct? That, that will not be included in this, or is, or is that part of your vision?
The, I guess, part of my vision is the Newman Center itself would be included. The church itself, and it's the parking for religious purposes, is exempt from property taxes. However, the faith-based housing would be paying property taxes, and so you could create, capture increment from the faith-based housing that would go into the TIF fund, could help the neighborhood. It would not go back to the church.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is a lot of the inside baseball that I think needs to be clarified before we go forward. That's, because I think it's a very big decision, whether to include the faith-based housing, to not include it. Are, are we just going to include the Roar's property? Those are all big questions that will affect the whole project, and so that.
Maybe you could split it. You could do what you say, and then you could have another motion for the renewal area to look into it.
I think what, if you wish, I could come back with really two versions of the plan, one that strictly helps the developer, and the other that helps the developer and the neighborhood.
So, what did that just mean?
The, the size, the size of the TIF district could exclude the, maybe I'm trying to figure out what Commissioner Pepcorn wants, but we could have a TIFs district that is just the Roar's site, and just use TIF money to assist with that project, to let the faith-based housing, not have that being a TIF, and have that be, go to the general taxing districts, and not do any activities outside of the specific district.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's my question, and I think that's, that's, it's a big question. And, and I think as a group, we'll, I think the tax exempt review committee should be involved in this conversation as well, too, to, to decide how would this, if, if it proceeded, how would it look? So, I apologize for getting too far off the track.
Mr. Grinberg? Wouldn't the tax exempt review committee have the discretion to take those paths, other than have a direction here? You would have that option, as it could be, right?
That was, that was the intent of that committee, that would be reviewing that and decide how big the TIF district would be and, and what should be included. That would be the tax exempt committee unless you were to, you know, bring in some other committee.
And we meet in June, so you could address that at that time. So what you'd like to do is have this go on to the financial advisors to evaluate the TIF issue. Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded. Further discussion. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. I'm, I want to acknowledge the folks in the back corner over here, now that the audience has left and we can see you, but we have folks from the Roosevelt Neighborhood, and we have folks from Roar's, and we have folks from the Newman Center here, and, and you're all in the same neighborhood, and we will be going forward. So, so that's where I'm coming from with this, is I, I'm, 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 I stand with the neighborhood typically almost as a rule. On the other hand, what Jim Gilmore has suggested we explore here is, is to see if we can turn this TIF into a benefit, not just for the developer, but for the neighborhood. And, and we know Roosevelt Neighborhood is our maybe most at-risk neighborhood, and it's the neighborhood that's most affected by the, the shifts in, of, of the location of the campus housing. So I, I'm really concerned about that neighborhood. I'm, I'm especially concerned about their voice, and, and I'm concerned that our policies with this prac, this project go past what we had set up for where the University of Mixed Use Housing would be with higher density. But that said, I would like to see what you could come up with, and what your tax exempt review committee, Commissioner Pepcorn, could come up with. I chair community development, and affordable housing, and poverty, and blight. These are our front burner topics. If, if you can approach this and come up with a TIF that really says to the neighborhood, we know you've had some trade-offs, but we also know we're going to leverage our investment into your neighborhood going forward with this trade-off. I'm very open to hearing that. I don't want to vote against this right now to preclude that opportunity to hear what it could look like, but if it doesn't look like it's going to benefit the neighborhood, and if it looks like it's just going to benefit the developer, I will land with the neighborhood. But I'd, I'd like to see, so I join you with this motion for the moment. And, and the neighborhood, when they met the other night, we had the same discussion. They're opposed to it at this point, and probably possibly still, but, but they know that we're going to explore and, and, and review and, and try see what, what it could look like, and that's, I'd, I'd like to see that before I, I drop the hammer on this TIF request.
Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Number 35, recommendation City of Fargo to pledge $400,000 to Fueling Our Future over four years. Craig Whitney and Joe Rosso to explain.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I'm Craig Whitney, President and CEO of the Chamber. I think you have, have, have been provided the details of this initiative that we are undertaking in your packets, but I thought what I'd do is just kind of go through some of the key areas. First of all, starting with, what is Fueling Our Future? Fueling Our Future is a long-term community initiative designed to provide a regional approach to decision-making. It was not designed to solve today or tomorrow's problems today, but created to position our region for success in the future. A brief history of where we have, where we started and where we are today. The Chamber Board has been studying this concept for a number of years now, and decided it was needed to complement all of the positive things that are occurring in our marketplace. So we commissioned a case study, a feasibility study, and established a financial goal of $5 million to be raised in the first four years of this long-term initiative. I think of special note and of interest to you would be that of the $5 million goal, we have targeted, and our goal is that 4 million of that will come from the private sector and 1 million from the public sector. Through all of our community collaboration, three main pillars of focus were established, and a complex plan was put together. It became obvious that collaboration with the EDC was needed to ensure success of this initiative. Fueling Our Future will accomplish work that neither organization can accomplish on its own. It goes above and beyond the missions of both organizations. A governance board will oversee and vote on the initiatives that will, that funds will be dedicated toward. The board will be made up of major private and public investors. We have named some investors to the board in order to kick this initiative off, and more will be added as we continue to secure investments. As I mentioned before, Fueling Our Future has three pillars that Joe Reisow from the EDC will now discuss.
Thanks, Craig. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you. Hour and a half into your meeting and conversation with the West Fargo City Commission, it was three and a half hours before we got the mic, so you're way ahead of schedule. I really appreciate that very much. On July 18th of last year, I was three days into my job as the President and CEO of the Regional EDC, and I had an opportunity to meet with Craig and his team to learn a little bit more about this Fueling Our Future initiative. And the one question that I asked Craig at that time was, after hearing some of the details, was, so as I understand, Craig, really what we're looking for is to bring the business community together as a leader with the public sector, to drive initiatives that we're not going to be able to do ourselves as individual organizations, but instead as regional leaders, whether it's public or private sector. And the answer was yes. And then, as Craig just said, having been in other communities, looking at these similar initiatives, I knew that the success is going to come from the private sector leading with the public sector supporting and being leaders as well. And to know that this initiative is going to be driven primarily by private sector funding gave me a big thumbs up. And at that time, the EDC board had voted to support moving that initiative forward, but it went to the full board about a month and a half into my tenure with the EDC, and got 100%, well, pretty much 100% approval on that, on being part of Fueling Our Future. And really, what drives me to be here today and at West Fargo and all these other private sector conversations is that the three pillars that Craig mentioned, the first being workforce and talent. We just heard conversations that you're making budget decisions about with public safety for the region and for the community of Fargo. How do those dollars come about into the city coffers? It's more business driving the economy, and what's the number one need that business has? It's workforce. And how do we get more people into the marketplace to drive more property taxes, more sales taxes for our market? Now, we have initiatives at, at the EDC, the Chamber does as well, but how are we working together to address broader, long-term regional workforce development for our marketplace? We feel Fueling Our Future can do that. The other pillar, or the second of the three pillars, is prosperity, and that's really about the economic growth of the region and business development. Again, as an economic development corporation, there are things we're doing every day to help our primary sector businesses attract and retain workforce, but what are bigger, longer-term business development initiatives to help those businesses be successful? And then third is the place. You know, what are we doing as a marketplace, again, regionally, across both sides of the river, to attract and retain people and companies here? What are those kinds of amenities that we need to have to be successful in doing that? And there have been a number of things that have been talked about in the 10 months that I've been here in the community. I think the question is, is who's responsible? And sometimes that responsibility falls not on one organization, but on multiple organizations. And that's really the crux of Fueling Our Future, and the reason why I said three days on the job, Craig, we're going to lock arms and we're going to get this figured out, and we're going to continue to drive this. And this isn't a four-year initiative. It's the start of a, first of four years for what we hope will be many initiatives, such as what Sioux Falls has done for the last 35 years. Oklahoma City with their Maps Project is another example. So what we're talking about here is a partnership around a structure that has been done in other places. It's, it's time for our region to take hold and join arms and do that, and that's why we're here in front of you this evening.
Commissioner Garrick?
What are the other cities kicking in?
Sorry?
How much are the other cities paying?
I, I, to be honest with you, I don't know exactly the numbers that the other cities are putting into this. The request we have is 8% for the City of Fargo in terms of the goal.
Okay. When you say regional, I just assume that there'd be other dollars coming besides Fargo, then?
Oh, well, West Fargo has already committed $400,000. I, I apologize. I thought you were talking about other markets.
Oh, okay. You know, for me, I look at things like this, and we do our own studies. There's lots of studies being floated around, and they all kind of touch the same areas. I see our job here as local government to help you guys with the information that we already have. We do these studies for how many people live in apartments, how many people are looking for jobs here or there. Tony Grinberg with your job at NDSCS, I mean, these, these studies float around a lot. So I don't see our role as local government to fund these type of things. We are an asset and a resource for you folks. Our employees, you have access to them all the time. So I'm happy to help support these kinds of studies and give the information that we have, which is a lot, but I don't think $400,000 is going to make or break a study, so I'll be voting against it.
Perhaps, Craig, you could explain it's not a study you're doing right now. This is.
Right. I was going to mention that. This is, by no means a study. I think when you talk about studies, you talk about things like the Workforce Academy, the Convention Center, Performing Arts, but rather, this is a long-term initiative that we set out to include a lot of people from the community, all walks of life, education, public, private sector. And what we did was, we wanted to identify specific challenges that we're not doing a good job of addressing now. For instance, things in the K through 12, higher education. So these are things that will take a long time to work on, but will put us in a much better position 10, 15, 20 years from now. So by no means would I consider this a, a study.
But you're also considering in the workforce analysis just to hire people. I mean, I think one of the things you enjoy trying to do is to drive businesses that actually would hire that workforce that we're looking for, and or attract that workforce. So by the city investing in it, what we're going to expect out of this in an outcome analysis is you're going to hire more people for jobs. So when the governor talks about, we've got all these jobs available, we're not putting people into those jobs. Your goal then, as I understand it, is you're going to actually put people into jobs and get all those jobs we have out here filled.
And, you know, this is all, I mean, this all boils down to economic development and planning forward and working on our workforce issues. You know, if you just take one issue in the area of workforce, it's K through 12. We have found through all of the work that we've done on this project so far that there are a lot of things that are not being done with our K through 12 students. Things like introducing them to the different opportunities they have when they graduate from high school, the jobs that are here, the trades that are out there and available, and making them aware of that at a young age and going through until they graduate. By the same token, one of the things that we are missing the boat on in this community is we have thirty to thirty-five thousand college students, and we're just not placing a focus on them to keep them here, to retain them here after they graduate, to, again, let them know what's in the community. Not just about their work and their social life, but the opportunities that are here, the nonprofits, the companies that are here, and to show them and demonstrate the reasons why they should consider and eventually why they should stay in our region.
Mr. Grinberg.
Just more comment and a question. A little bit of history here. Nineteen ninety-two, then the Fargo-Cascany Economic Development Corporation reorganized its operation and set its sights to generate six thousand jobs in four years, with eighty percent of the funding coming from the private sector and twenty percent public. Approximately $2 million was raised back in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-two range, largely led by the EDC. My point I'm trying to make is, there was a call to action and a plan that the business community and her residents resonated with as an objective to create jobs. And we've gone along our journey respectively over the years. The Chamber's merged, EDC has merged with our counterparts in Minnesota, and a lot of synergy around regionalism. And what I am excited about is, this is a call to action that hasn't existed for many years. You've got a strategy, you've put almost two years into this planning, and now you're ready to unleash it. And I think this community, our region, is ready for this, because we've been doing a lot of great things over the years, but we haven't had a consistent unified plan. And that's what excites me about this. And we're getting back to eighty percent coming from the private sector and asking for twenty percent from the public. That's a fair deal, in my opinion, and I'd be more pleased that the United Way is sitting right behind you, because I know they're partners and want to see you be successful as well.
Mr. Pepcorn.
Mr. Tur, just a couple of quick comments. So, I agree with what Commissioner Grinberg just said. So, a lot of cities our size have an economic development part of their city. And the way I look at it is, they're a part of us. And this is, like you were talking about, the collaboration, that's what this is. And I'm very pleased that West Fargo is participating at the same level we are. That, Mr. Mayor, that's a long time coming. It used to be, it was always our turn to buy lunch, and it was never their turn. But what the commitment is for us is a hundred thousand, $100,000 a year for four years. And so, we can, we have to make sure we put that in our budget. But the other thing that's happening is, the Chamber and the EDC are now working together. I think in the past, there was conflict, and now they're working together and they have the same, they're going in the same direction. And so, I think for us to be a part of this, it's a great thing. It's a collaboration, and it's not only just us, it's Morehead, West Fargo, it's our region, and we have to, we have to be aggressive. And I think we're fortunate, Jim Gilmore is here to work with the EDC. He's kind of our economic development. But in a lot of cities, they spend a lot more than we do on economic development, and I think this is a very good bang for our buck. And so, I'll be supporting it. And with that, I'll make the motion, unless you would like to...
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Mr. Strand.
Thank you. I'm trying to just visualize what this would look like. You know, we're making a commitment to a concept as much as anything, but I'm wondering, what will it turn out to be in reality? What will we be funding? And what will we see as a result?
Let me start with the fact, Commissioner, that, and I may have mentioned this earlier, but we will be forming a governance board. That governance board will be made up of the major investors. And if the City of Fargo steps up to the plate in terms of what we're asking tonight, they will have a seat on that governance board. That governance board will review what the staff and the Executive Committee of Fueling Our Future brings to that board in terms of, what are the projects, what are the costs of those projects? And they will have the final vote as to how and what we move forward supporting.
A question I have is, will this be just focused on new jobs? Or will we be looking at underpaying jobs? And step up the standard of living for so many thousands of our people?
Yeah, that's a good question. And I think, you know, in terms of where that focus is, when we talk about workforce, it has to be holistic. It just needs to be. As the EDC, our focus is the primary sector companies and their wages, which tend to be the higher wages in the marketplace on average. But in our role working with the Chamber and the United Way and all these other partners in the region, we have to be mindful of what this looks like for our entire community. So, I can't give you an example of a specific program, but I don't think we're going to be just looking at workforce as we would as the EDC specifically in what you fund the EDC for and what others fund the EDC for.
And the other thing is, the Chamber does have a packet on Fuel the Future. You've got twenty-two goals in that packet, and it can be explained to the commissioners at any time. Mr. Strand.
I have a question perhaps for Eric or you, Mayor Mahoney. If we commit to $400,000 now, that's a decision of this commission, and we've committed the future commissions to that. If we voted for $100,000 now, I suppose that leaves it up in the air for future commissioners to decide what they do. If we voted $400,000 now, does that etch it in stone that future commissions are committed to this decision?
Yes, I think it does. I think it does, it's a commitment. Then, you're being asked to sign a pledge. So, that would be, that pledge would be an obligation of this City Commission and of the City of Fargo.
Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to that as well. We fully anticipate and expect that the, our duty is to provide to all of our investors a regular update on how we're doing and what we're doing in terms of the goals and the overall plan itself. And so, we have the full understanding that at the end of the year, if we have not lived up to what we've told you that we would, that, you know, it's subject to open a discussion. But what we're asking is, for, as we are with all of our investors, a four-year commitment so that we know that we can move this forward and make the appropriate plans as needed.
And that's right, John.
If I might continue, Mayor. Does, do your topics include things, other topics like housing, affordable housing, childcare? Are those on your, is that on your general overall radar, too?
Absolutely. We have, as part of the establishment of this partnership between our two organizations, in the document, the partnership document, it specifies that we will have an advisory council that will meet to discuss and actually work with us to determine the appropriate process for organizations to apply for resources, understanding that the criteria around those are that the issue will be one that would address our entire regional economy and support our region. So, could affordable housing be a topic where there's a plan that comes forward that the Fueling Board would say, "Yes, that has a benefit across our region, and it's part of a bigger strategy, and we can support that"? Yes, that would be included in that.
Mr. Strand.
Mayor, I move an amendment that we, the City of Fargo, pledge the first $100,000 toward this goal campaign, and we revisit it in one year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Pepcorn?
No.
Grinberg?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Go back to the motion and any other discussion. Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Moving to item, thank you, gentlemen. Moving to items twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Commissioner Strand, do you pull these?
I did. Do we have fourteen, too? Fourteen?
No, that was pulled.
Okay.
That was withdrawn by transit, so that's not back up. So, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, what's your concerns, Commissioner Strand?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I've heard from a business downtown Fargo that it would appear is really hugely impacted by these projects that we're undertaking downtown. And I guess a couple of concerns I have is, initially, is to what type of support and outreach are we providing the businesses? And the second question is, I know when we embarked upon these projects and we received the letter, the petition from the developer for this project, it led to us to confirm with other owners in the property district who was supporting of this, but they're all the same people except for one owner. So, my concern is, do we have a feedback from the businesses affected by these projects? And what type of outreach did we do with them? Not just the owners, but their tenants, to make sure that we're not disrupting their businesses, so, just, you know, unusually disrupting them? Because these are several weeks of affected practices.
You're going to be surprised, as our engineering staff did reach out and worked very hard with all the renters in the area. I'll have Brenda Darian explain this, is what happened. We actually modified the plan to accommodate some of the renters in the area. So, our team does listen to them quite a bit, and I'm a little upset that the renter you talked to did not relay that some of the stuff that the engineers had done, but I'll have Brenda explain it.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. One of the things I would like to do is kind of step back and have you understand what our process is today for anyone that would like to have their alley paved. So, what we're talking about today is the Roberts Alley from First to Second Avenue North. And as Commissioner Strand talked about, there is one ownership in this area with the exception of the Walton Building. That is actually owned by the chiropractor. So, today, the process for any alley to be paved is to complete a petition by the adjacent property owners. And like Commissioner Strand said, this adjacent property alley happens to have ninety-five percent plus owned by one owner. To move a petition process forward, we have to have at least fifty-five percent of the property owners before we'll move that forward to the PUPAC, excuse me, Public Works Project Evaluation Committee. And then, from there, with a recommendation from there, we'll start the design. So, we have had projects where we might be on the bubble of fifty percent. Once we get it designed, there is also a protest period. So, once the project's created, there is a thirty-day protest period, but it is only by the landowners that can protest or allow the project in. And so, that is our process today. So, we design them upon petition of over fifty-five percent. So, what have we done today for the alley? You know, Commissioner Strand had reached out to us. Our project manager's been working with the adjacent property owners, mostly because he's been going in. Also, we have quite a few encroachments in that alley. So, he's been going in the buildings, looking at the encroachments, and then visiting with the renters and discussing different options for deliveries. So, he has been working with, you know, Scan Design, Helberstats, and a few of the other ones on where the delivery locations will be. So, we have been going back and forth. One of the things we did look at doing is, we have kind of separated the project to minimize the impact to delivery along the alley, and so that the Scan Design will only be impacted for two weeks instead of the original thirty days we had been looking at. That does delay the construction of the project. So, on Friday also, Mike Zimny is here also as representative of the owner. And so, Mike had called, he reached out to us on Friday also because he is working with his renters on what options there are for deliveries, not knowing that our project manager was also working with the renters on different options. So, Mike and Rick are now talking, making sure they're both coming at this as a joint on how to handle their options for deliveries. Some of the things that Mike wanted to make sure, and we've seen this, too, is, you know, the request background is the alley is in very poor condition. It was constructed back in nineteen twelve. It lacks drainage. There have been requests for temporary asphalt, with the understanding, as part of the reconstruction of the alley, we're going to be removed, they will be removing those encroachments so that we can get them out of the alleyway. And so, this just talks about the removal of the encroachments that are under the alley today that limits that reconstruction. So, upon the redoing of the black building, that will allow that reconstruction with the removal of those encroachments, underground encroachments. And so, I've just got a few pictures here. And then, I would entertain any other questions.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you. You know, I'm trying to sort this out in my mind. We have two projects. We have the alley, and we have the power lines. And they're separate projects, but happening at the same time? Or similar?
So, here's the way I look at it. The request to pave the alley isn't related to the redevelopment adjacent to that. When we're reconstructing the alley, we are putting in conduits for the future burial of that line. But the alley isn't being reconstructed for the burying of the line. It's being reconstructed due to the redevelopment on each side of it.
And I recall when we were talking power lines, there was a three-way mix of funding. One was eight-hundred and some thousand or so to the Kilborn Group, nine-hundred and some thousand to the City General Fund, and five-hundred thousand or, I'm ballparking this to XL. How is this alley project funded? Is it special assessed?
All alleys are a hundred percent special assessed.
That's a separate funding mechanism for that?
Yep, that has nothing to do with the presentation on the burying of the lines.
See the folks from Scan Design here. Do you mind addressing us? And I just want to know, we're all on the same page, that we're working with the businesses as best we can to accommodate your challenges when these projects are underway?
Hi, I'm Mary Larsen Cantrell and my partner, Alan. We were, I just wanted to clarify that we didn't talk with anybody about this until it was agreed upon and in the newspaper, and then we reached out to have, to find out what was going to happen so that we could deal with it as best as possible. Our concerns is, we moved here fifteen years ago. We operate a modern furniture store. So, very heavy things come in and out every day. We have the front door, we have the back door. Our truck comes every day to the back door. And Rick from the city has been very nice to come over and talk with me and try to find some solutions. And they modified the project so that it was only going to be fourteen days that we actually can't have any access at all to the back alley. But we can only unload on the avenues surrounding. And so, as you can imagine, coming down the sidewalk on Broadway with a huge cabinet, a mattress, leaving the truck open, and, you know, when you have your hands full, that you might have people steal things out of the back, all sorts of chaos happening, jostling through pedestrians on the sidewalk. So, that's our concern. And we were not included in any of the discussion leading up to the project being approved. So, that's, you know, also a concern for us. Alan?
She pretty much covered it. We've been here, we have had our business downtown here since 2004. We were downtown before, it was cool to be downtown. We've, you know, we've endured a lot of different things, but... We've, you know, we've endured a lot of different things, but I don't know if we could endure not being able to bring furniture in and out, or to try and ask our delivery people to go half a block carrying a sofa or whatever it might be. We have people who have actually gone and stole things out of our truck when we're parked right behind our store. So leaving our truck unattended, I, you know, it's, it's a little bit daunting. So that's a big concern.
I want to thank you for, you know, speaking up, but it's not like you're pointing fingers. My sense is, is you've alerted us to the challenges that will come to your business relative to this project unfolding. I am concerned, I don't know where the communications broke down. I hope we, I hope the other businesses heard from us, not just owners. But I don't know if you can speak for them, but I hope.
Well, I can speak for Tim Helberstad, and he just was in and bought some furniture. He said no one had talked to him.
So that's one issue that I hope we can address going forward. And the second one is, are you folks comfortable now that you have a workable plan that is acceptable to you?
No.
We, we don't. As we said, carrying furniture half a block down to the end of the block, I don't think that's doable.
Mike Zimny looks like he has, would like to join in.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Mike Zimny of Kilborn Group, owner representative. We've been, our discussions, as Brenda has alluded to with Rick, one of the ideas that Mary brought up was trying to get parking, delivery access onto Broadway. And so I think the city is, is open to that idea, phasing the project so that they have limited amount of disruption of how many days, that fourteen days. But we would be fine if this, whatever the city and Mary and Scan Designer are more comfortable with, of putting spots in front of the black building, and putting those as delivery-only spots for Helber Stats, Scan Design, and other businesses, or if it's preferable to have it directly in front of their business as well.
So Mike, why don't you work with Brenda and see what we can do, and we'll try to accommodate it. It's going to be two weeks, we can figure it out. We'll have our team work with you on that. Is that fair?
And Mike did on Friday, that's how we found out. Mike's been visiting with them, and Rick's been visiting with them. And so Mike and Rick talked this morning, and so they are working on adjusting. In fact, the plan's already adjusted with parking sites.
Well, I think what Commissioner Strand, he makes a good point. We sometimes know the owners, but the renters are just as important, and it's just up to the business. And we very much like you being downtown, and we'll try to work this with you. But two weeks, we'll try to make something work for you. That's fair.
I'd also like to make note that, you know, we're very cognizant of when these rural projects happen, the disruptions. And so our kind of thoughts was, was once the project was approved, we've been talking with the city and engineering about having a neighborhood meeting where this project, the city's got Roberts Street under construction, Block Nine and other related projects, of being able to bring in all the, all the neighborhoods, the residents, the businesses, prior to some of these projects starting, to be able to raise any concerns, get questions answered prior to the actual.
So once it's approved, then it's easier to talk to the neighbors, say this is coming, so we need to figure it out. Is that correct?
Correct.
I have a motion on items twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. And Brenda, and maybe just, it's already in your thinking already, but as, and who knows how often these projects, but just have a checklist for affected businesses, not just owners. So we know ourselves too that they will, they will be coming to us, and sooner we reach out to them, the better, a little more proactively.
Nope. I understand your comments. Just so we all understand, what we're doing today is creating the project. And so we still have thirty days for that project to even move forward. So that's what the action tonight would be.
It would be. And yet, I want our businesses affected as early on as possible to know.
Roll call vote.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick. Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Is there any other business? I don't think we missed anything, did we?
No.
Oh, excuse me. Eric, yes. What happened in the executive committee, please?
Yeah, so again, there was an executive session starting at four o'clock that included discussion of the lawsuit that's still active, pending, the city of Fargo versus Karen Wieland. And that lawsuit has some activities lately, including an appeal. But at the same time, over the course of the last few months, the engineer's office has been planning a project to button up the neighborhood with respect to flood control. And if I may, hand it over to Brenda Derrick to provide a little bit of an overview of what that project is. And we're looking for direction from the city commission. Looking from, looking for direction from the city commission with respect to whether to include the Wieland property in the project as it's to be bid.
So FM fourteen thirteen is the final flood risk mitigation project for Oak Creek and Copperfield Court. When combined with the other flood protection, completion of this project will allow future floods to be fought with fully intact levees in place along the drain from I-29 to South University Drive. And so that's along Drain Twenty-seven and the Rose Creek Cooley. The cost will be more per lineal foot to install the levee for a single lot at a later date. This eliminates the need to protect for a spring flood, along with the disruption of the neighborhood, which they have suffered for many years, and to delay any more simply, to delay any more simply extends the disruption. So we will be installing a retaining wall in Oak Creek, and it is almost mandatory that we need to extend that wall towards the north into the Wieland property at this time, since the wall does need to be stained and match the existing walls that are there today. And these are just retention walls that we have. So there will be, no matter what, some disruption on that Wieland property, even with the house remaining. So I want to show you a little bit the layouts. As you can see to the north, that's the project along Copperfield Court. On the south is the project along Oak Creek. So we have completed all of our buyouts in the Oak Creek project. And so we can complete this levee, and there's a dark line towards the north, and that is the retention wall that we will be tying. There's an existing retention wall there today, and we'll be tying into that and extending it south, and then doing a stain match with that existing wall to the north. Along Copperfield Court, the, the black line to your right is the wall that is there today that we need to extend the north to the property that we are looking, that we are working on taking right now. All the houses that you see to the north are already purchased. So all of these houses we have already purchased, and so we just have the one lot here.
Purchased and moved out. There's just a.
Yep.
Grass, two grass on there.
Correct. So, so this spring, when we were flood, when there was a possibility of the elevation, the flood fight going up high, we were looking at the possibility of coming in front of this house, as there's no one occupying it at this time, nor has there been for a while. I don't know if you want me to talk anymore about timeline, timelines, or what you would like me to discuss further, Eric.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, the suggested motion, but Brenda, could you move, could you go back a couple of slides and just show, so basically what this flood protection provides is, this levee is for those houses right there, but the school, Centennial School is right adjacent, correct?
Correct.
And so that's why, you have to use some common sense. We need to get these levees all done through the whole city, and we need to do more of this faster. We got to get done sandbagging. We got to get out of that business. And the public wants us to complete the levees. And so I think this is obviously a smart thing, especially when you have to go back. It would cost us more if we didn't do this one lot. So it's ridiculous. And it is one attorney who's chronic at throwing a whole bunch of stuff against the wall. He has, he also has, if he was a football player, if he was a coach, he would not be, he doesn't win very often, so he wouldn't be in the job very long. But I, I'm in favor of the motion, and let's, let's move on.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Is that part of the alternate is in there?
Yep. I got that added at the end.
Thanks.
Roll call vote.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Any other thing out of the executive committee which we need to discuss here, Eric?
No, I think that covers it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other business of the commission? Is moved to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.